For March 22nd, 2018. As we call this meeting to order, we would ask Reverend Dan Phillips, Associate Pastor of Francis Baptist Church, to come forward. Pastor Phillips here. Can we get Pastor Alonzo Mulberry? He would come forward and lead us with the invocation of the pledge to the flag. Pastor Mulberry, will you lead us with the invocation? Commissioner Campbell, will you lead us in the pledge?
Father, we thank you again for allowing us to come together. We thank you for your goodness and for your mercy. We pray, God, that you will lead God your directions, give instructions for those things that are necessary as you come to do business. You should in business be men, be thinking with opportunity. You compound their head with wisdom, give understanding in those things that are necessary to do the things that need to be done. We thank you for today, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me as we move on to nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Mulberry.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown is absent. Commissioner Borum.
Present.
Mr. Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner McCaswell is absent. You have a forum.
Thank you. Has everyone had an opportunity to look at the minutes from the March 8th workshop and reading? There's a motion for a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now we move on to our public recognitions. Our first recognition. It's gonna be for our Palaca High School basketball team, the boys varsity basketball team. For those who aren't familiar with the boys basketball team, this year is the second year under the leadership of Coach Brian Oxodine that the team went to the Final Four representing the city of Palaca in Lakeland, Florida. It was a great showing. It felt just a little short of being victorious with a 55 to 51 loss in that game. But our young men, we've got mostly everyone coming back except three players. And so we look forward to some more great things out of this group. At this time, I'm gonna ask our coaches to come up. We've got Head Coach Brian Oxodine. Coach B. Got Coach Al Leonard. Coach Flyes in here. We've got Coach Mulberry. Not only does he pray, but he also sits on the bench. The last guy is the coach with the gun, Chief Shaw. And so these, the group of young, the group of men that are assembled before us today, they dedicate themselves to really helping build young men and building godly men. And they've worked tirelessly with this group of young men. And all too many times, we don't give them enough thank you for sacrificing and working for our young people. And so we want to make sure that we say thank you to you and we appreciate all that you do and molding these young men. And so again, thank you. I'm gonna turn the floor over to Coach Oxodine, who will have 30 seconds of words for you and introduce the team.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Where's my team? Palaca Catholic Basketball Team, come on around. There we go. Mr. Jared Johnson, Senior. Mr. DeShawn Shaw, Sophomore. Mr. Wadante Smith, Junior. Mr. Aquarius Felder, better known as Day Day, Junior. Mr. Malik Buford, Sophomore. We call him Smooth in summer off in our circle. Mitchell McKinnon, Junior, especially known as Bird. And Wesley Roberts, Sophomore. Big Wes is what we call him. And we have two of our team members that couldn't be here, Michael Weeds, Junior, and Shamari Dumas, Senior. What I'd like to take the time out to say is, first of all, I appreciate the mayor giving us this time and opportunity in the city of Palaca and the community of Palaca for supporting us and the administration of PHS for supporting us. We have one of our administrators here, Ms. Sharice Williams. Thank you for all that you do. We have another administrator here, Ms. Pamela Brown. Thank you for all that you do. And her sister, Ms. Pamela Brown's sister, Ms. Lisa Thomas. Thank her for all that she do. She's invaluable to us. But I'd like to take this time to thank all my coaching staff. I have a coaching staff, and I have a coaching staff second to none. Without them, we wouldn't be as successful as we are. It takes more than one man to guide a ship, and they helped me in ways you can't even imagine. So I'm so grateful. And I'm grateful that God has given us the spirit of being able to serve each other. And that God has given these young men the spirit to be humble young men, to be dedicated young men, to be hardworking young men, and to, and to be able to see their future and to handle themselves in a way that they're gonna be great citizens for the city of Palaca and the world. So I'm so grateful to have a team like this. And I don't want to omit anyone here, and there's a member of our staff, Coach Shaw's wife, Ms. Gina, that just helps us out in so many ways. Ms. Gina Shaw. And last but not least, my wife, who supports me. She hasn't been through it with me when I'm depressed after a loss for about three days. But she helps me to get over it. But I'd like to say thank you to the community of Palaca. We were 28-3 this year, and just a great season. We were winners of the Jarvis, Anthony Jarvis Williams Tournament, and we were the winner of Christmas Tournament, and we were the winners also of the St. John's River Athletic Conference Tournament, first year. We were district champions for the second year in a row, and we were regional champions. So these guys have a lot to be proud of, and we thank the city of Palaca for recognizing that. Thank you so much. Last thing on my agenda, Mr. Mayor. We'd like to thank our great mayor of the city of Palaca, Mr. Terrell Hill. For three years now, he has taken our young men to Orlando to a magic game, free of charge. Don't have to pay for anything to eat, no fees. They get to spend a great day at the arena in Orlando. And it's invaluable to our young men. And I'm just, I just wanted to present it with this from, from the coaches and the team, a little talking about our appreciation, say thank you and we love you, Mr. Mayor.
Before we go, I won't, it's not just me that's taking these kids there. It's this commission, I think, is committed to making sure that we invest in our young people. But mostly Andrew Halesko from Passero and Associates, which is an engineering firm that has designed the airport, the redesign of the airport. And one of the things that Mr. Halesko wanted to do was he wanted to give back to, to young folks in Palaca. And so we came up with the idea of taking the kids to the magic game. We take both the boys and the girls basketball team, along with kids from Powell. And we take them to the basketball game. The first year, they got a chance to shake hands with the players at halftime. The second year, they went on the court and shot baskets after the game, and they participated in the National Anthem. And this year, they got a chance to cut the nets down. But Passero and Associates gives about $5,000 for this trip for these kids to go. The city of Palaca supplements by feeding them, and the young folks have an opportunity to go in and get a chance to see their dream being lived by other individuals. And one of the highlights this year was getting a chance to talk about people that have been around them their entire time and what these coaches do, what Mr. Halesko and his colleagues do, as well as what the city commissioners do in their professional capacity. And, you know, they were able to find out that people like Coach Oxodine had been the postmaster and a former federal agent. And so when kids were talking about what they wanted to do for their careers, they were, they never realized that the person who lived their dream was actually around them every day because they had never talked about careers. A lot of it had been basketball in school center. And so we were able to, to have them realize that just from their own community, many of the things that they were dreaming of have already been lived with people that they come in contact with on a daily basis. And then the other part is just being able to have them go out and talk to NBA All-Stars like Nick Anderson, who took time out and spent a lot of time talking to them about what it took to be in the NBA and giving them, sharing his experience and his wisdom with them. And so they could put their hands on NBA greats who actually got a chance to share with them. And so that's probably really the most exciting times that we have. It's a long bus, it's a long bus trip. It was even longer this year because Mr. Folsen brought kids over with him as well. But it was just a great time, and it's something that we look to make a tradition. And, you know, winning isn't, you know, winning is a part of this, of the process. But the real winners are when you get a chance to create family atmosphere, you get a chance to create student athletes, and you get a chance to mold young men. And they're not broken, and that's what we're really proud of. And so again, guys, we thank you, we're proud of you, and we're looking forward to not only a state championship, but we're looking forward to you guys going on to bigger and better things once you leave Palaca. And so thank you. So I got a towel with the autographs of the guys over here for the final four. Next up is Mayor's Day of Recognition, and at this time, we want to bring up Lisa Alukovich from Communities and Schools, along with our grandparents, who are our special guests, and they are foster grandparents. So these seniors that we have in here today have had the, we got an opportunity to celebrate both our seniors and our young people in a reception earlier before the commission meeting. And it's always a great time when our seniors can impart wisdom on, on our, on our children. And it's often said that a smart man learns from his own mistakes, but a wise man learns from the mistakes of others. And so today, they got an opportunity to hear words and to really get a chance to interact. And we were able to pair up generations of wisdom with useful exuberance. And it's just a wonderful thing to see the exchange. And we had to call the kids in from their conversations just so that they could grab something to eat before the commission meeting because they were so engaged in the conversation that was going on. And that's always a great thing because that's how I learned, that's how so many of us have learned throughout the years. And that's something that always we have to continue to be mindful of. But we've got a proclamation that reads as follows. Where our service to others is the hallmark of American character and central to how we meet our challenges. Sites are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet their needs. And whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants address the most pressing challenge facing our community, from educating students for jobs of the 21st century, fighting opioid epidemics, to responding to natural disasters, providing health services, and supporting veterans and military families. National service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. Whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants serve in more than 50,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic neighborhood and faith-based organizations that are so viable, so vital to our economic and social well-being. National service participants increase the impact of the organization they serve, both through their direct service and by managing millions of additional volunteers. Whereas the national service represents unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayers' dollars. National service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making intensive commitments to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. Corporation of National and Community Service shares priority with city and county officials and mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities. And is joining with the National League of Cities, the National Association of Counties, the Cities of Service, mayors, cities, and counties across the county for the Mayor, City, and County Recognition Day for National Service on April 3rd, 2018. Now therefore, I, Terrell Hill, Mayor of the city of Palaca, on behalf of the Palaca City Commission, do hereby proclaim April 3rd, 2018 as National Service Recognition Day in the city of Palaca, Florida, and call upon all citizens to recognize the positive impact of national service in our city and county, to thank those who serve and to find ways to give back to their community. And witness whereof up here to set my hand and calls to be affixed to seal the city of Palaca, Florida on this 22nd day in the year of March, the year of our Lord, 2018. Terrell Hill, Mayor, Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and Tammy McCaswell, Commissioners. I will entertain a motion. This is motion on the floor in a second. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
I just want to take the opportunity to thank, to thank Mayor Hill and the commission for the wonderful support that we've received over the past years for our program. We've been very fortunate that our program has served Ponton County for the past 14 years. And the national, this particular national service program, the Foster Grandparents, has actually been around since 1965. I am so proud to have worked with our volunteers over these past 12 years, and I wanted to take a moment to thank them personally and to introduce Ms. Lois Green with our volunteer at Mellon Elementary, Ms. Dora Watts, who's a new volunteer over at Mosley Elementary, Ms. Gladys Miller, who is also at Mosley, Grandma Bobby Milton at Mosley, Ms. Catherine Jenkins from Mosley, Ms. Emma Hunter from Mosley, Mr. Robert Dalton from James Day Lawn, and Ms. Georgia Green from Mosley Elementary. We currently have 28 volunteers that are serving throughout the county, and I'm so proud of the work that they do. Our volunteers are at schools, many of them every single day, working with kids and tutoring and mentoring, helping to build their self-esteem, helping them with academics, and just really helping to empower them for a brighter future. And they give so much love and so much dedication to, to, to the work that they do, and they bring so many smiles to the children that they serve. So I'm just so proud and thank you for the work that you do. And thank you so much to the commission, Ms. and Mr. Campbell, who has done phenomenal work with us, who worked with our program for several years. He's also on the new Communities and Schools Board, so we're so thrilled to have his, his energy behind us. And also I wanted to thank Ms. Patty Sheffield, who is our new local Board Chair for Communities and Schools. Without all of the support here, this program just is not possible. And I also want to say a special thank you to the Ponton County School District. They have been tremendous over the past several years in just providing what we need to have this program be successful. We've had so much support from our school board member, Nikki Cummings, Advisory Council member, Darlene Deal, who helped to cook meals for our volunteers during their meetings. Ms. Patty Sheffield, who's also given numerous hours in helping to prepare for our, the things that our program needs. So thank you to all of you. This really is a true partnership, and I'm so proud to, to work with, with all of you. And also want to thank Communities and Schools of Florida, who is our sponsor for the program and the Corporation for National Community Service, who provides our federal funding. Thank you so much for your time. Yes.
But I'm a witness to the wonderful work that these seasoned individuals put in our school system. I was fortunate to have my grandparents in my kindergarten class and first grade class. And some of the love that they gave off to the kids allowed them to blossom in the classroom. So I am definitely in support of this program. She didn't put the pun out, but if you are someone that is interested in this program or know someone that may be interested in this program, I know we're looking for individuals on the south end of the county, so definitely, definitely taking into consideration. It'll be not only a benefit to our school district, but I'm quite sure you'll get some joy out of it, or whoever may get some joy out of it as well. So thank you all. Thank you for what you do.
Just give a round of applause. And we'll excuse Ms. Milton for having a Florida State shirt on in the Gator Nation. Next up is Water Conservation Month. Mr. James Troyano, from St. John's River Water Management District. Maybe we can get Mr. Griffith to come up, or Mandy Tucker. Jonathan Griffith's here. Ask Mr. Griffith's going forward up. This proclamation for Water Conservation Month. Mr. Griffith has worked with the city. He's our Public Works Director. He works as project manager as well. And he recently penned a conservation project, which will save us about 900,000 gallons of potable water per day at the peak of his program on 237 acres of property owned by the city. And also creates a public-private partnership of the Taylor Farms. And so Jonathan has done great work. We recently got a $1.1 million grant for water management for that project, along with another $1.5 million in grants for additional water projects. And so along with Mandy Tucker, I'm going to read this proclamation as follows. Whereas water is the basic essential need of every living creature, clean and sustainable water resources are vital to Florida's environment, economy, and quality of life. More than 90% of Florida's drinking water is supplied by underlying aquifers. And our quality of life and the economy depend upon a reliable, clean, and available supply of water and a healthy environment. Whereas the St. John's River Water Management District is working with the state of Florida, other water management districts, local governments, and water supply utilities to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation and to increase efforts to conserve water. And whereas the city of Palaca has joined St. John's River Water Management District in encouraging and supporting water conservation through its water supply planning processes, coordination of educational programs, and special events, cooperative funding programs, technical assistance, and regulatory programs. Whereas all water use, including residential, commercial, industrial, agricultural, institutional, hospitality, private citizens, and others can make positive contributions to reduce water use and to protect Florida's water resources. Whereas the St. John's River Water Management District, city of Palaca, and other local government utilities, businesses, agriculture, environmental organizations, and other parties within interest in water use are developing a comprehensive and long-term water comprehensive program to instill a lasting culture of conservation in our communities. And whereas the governor and the cabinet of the state of Florida are designating April as Florida's Water Conservation Month to encourage authorities to conserve the state's precious water resources, now therefore I, Terrell Hill, Mayor of the city of Palaca, Florida, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2018, as Water Conservation Month in the city of Palaca. And I call upon each resident, visitor, and business to protect our precious resource by practicing water conservation measures and becoming more aware of the need to conserve water. And witness whereof up here to set my hand and calls to be affixed to seal the city, the city of Palaca, Florida on this 22nd day of March in the year of our Lord, 2018. Terrell Hill, Mayor, Commissioner Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and Tammy McCaswell, all entertain a motion. This is motion on the floor in a second. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Troyano is here, just in the nick of time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much.
And again, we want to thank the district for all that you've done for the city of Palaca and the continued partnership, and we look forward to many more. And again, thank you for your work.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly appreciate it. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Jim Troyano from the St. John's River Water Management District. This is big for us, you know, Water Proclamation. This is the 20th year that we're gonna celebrate April being Water Conservation Month. So on behalf of the district and the other four districts in the state, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and the American Water Works Association, we appreciate your leadership. We appreciate the dedication from the commission, but most importantly, we appreciate the community conserving water, not only today, but tomorrow and into our future. Because water is truly the thing that binds us together, and without it, you know, our future would be very bleak. So we continue working, cost-share projects and other efforts, we will continue doing good things for the future. So I certainly appreciate the time, and we certainly appreciate the staff, they do an excellent job, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Next up is Employee Recognitions. We want to make sure we recognize Ms. Sophia Smith for her five-year anniversary with the city of Palaca. Chief, if you don't mind, let you do the honors of the next recognition.
Okay. David Zimmer come forward. David just crossed a milestone in his career. I'll wait for him to get up. I'll do a poll again. He, he just, he just got to his seven-year anniversary, which means he's basically invested with the city. I mean, he's spent seven years here. I can tell you, I mean, I got the hardest-working crew in the world. I mean, with the limited numbers we have, I mean, these guys just don't quit. It's paramount, day in and day out. I mean, Dave has got phenomenal work ethic. I mean, he can work from sunup to sundown and never, ever, ever fusses about it. If I could commend him on one thing, that's his ability to just keep going. There's not a project that we've done, the fire station, that Dave hasn't chipped in. I haven't found anything yet he can't do, along with the other guys, that they can't, they'll, they'll all get together and figure it out. But it is a great milestone in his career. I mean, once it hit here, it means he's got a good chance of keeping him around. He's one of those ones that we need to retain. You know, that's, that's our institutional knowledge that Mr. Folsen has pushed to us the last, since he's been here, is retaining these guys and have institutional knowledge to keep us going. Dave's not only just a firefighter, he's a fire inspector, he's a hazmat technician. He's got all of his U.S.R. disciplines, which is Urban Search and Rescue. There's six disciplines behind that, and he's got multiple other certifications. Hopefully one day we're able to get him a promotion and get him moved up into supervisor ranks, but he just does a phenomenal job. And I'd like to thank him for reaching this milestone in his career. Look forward to seeing you at 10 years, and so thank you so much. Certificate says Employee Recognition, the city of Palaca City Commission, hereby expresses our sincerest appreciation and award the certificate to firefighter David Zimmer, and grateful recognition of seven years of outstanding service, productivity, performance, and dedication to public's service, safety service to the citizens of Palaca. Awarded this 22nd day of March, 2018. City Manager, Mr. Zirai K. Folsen, and Mayor Terrell Hill. Commissioners Mary Lawson Brown, Commissioner Rufus Borum, Commissioner Justin Campbell, and Commissioner Tammy McCaswell.
Just in closing, this, anytime you get an honor to recognize employees who show their commitment to the city, any municipality, their commitment to service is something to applaud, is something to be appreciative of. Hearing your chief say so many great things about you, your commitment to the organization as well as to your fellow colleagues, means a lot to us. So this is a lot of recognition that we take for granted and be able to bestow upon you. Hopefully you feel the same love, you feel the same appreciation that we feel for you in this moment. So thank you so much for your years of service.
Oh, and I failed to mention, and I still apologize, but he was elected to Palaca Daily News Reader's Choice Firefighter of the Year for 2018, is what I said. Next employee recognition is for 20 years of service. Not for you, Betsy. The lady who stands before me, this, this recognition says, employee recognition. The City of Palaca, Florida, City Commission hereby expresses our sincere appreciation and award this certificate to Betsy Jordan Driggers. City Clerk, and grateful recognition of twenty years of outstanding performance, creativity, leadership, and dedicated public service to the citizens of Palaca. Awarded this twenty-second day of March two thousand eighteen. Zirai Folsom, City Manager, Terrell Hill Mayor, Commissioners Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Born, Justin Campbell, and Tammy McCaskill. And so just to say a few words about Betsy, uh, and you really can't sum up twenty years in a few words, but I will tell you, uh, Betsy has probably more institutional knowledge than anybody in the City of Palaca. She is the person, uh, just to give you an example, uh, you have to make her leave. You can't just, she, she's not gonna just leave, but the thing about Betsy is, uh, Betsy's dedicated to her job, and, and it's a, it's a really, it's a really sad time for us right now, um as she mourns the death of her mother. But on Monday, when she was supposed to be out, she came in Monday night to finish her work, and I'm like, what are you doing there? I'm in Miami at a conference. I'm like, why are you there? And it's just because Betsy's belief is that it has to be perfect, it has to be there, and she's gonna make sure she goes the extra mile for that to happen. Uh oftentimes, I think, uh, it goes unrecognized, but we wanna make sure that we tell you we love you, we appreciate you, uh, and we, you know, and, and sometimes it's that sibling love around here, we appreciate you and all that you do, uh, we appreciate your dedication to your job, and we're gonna make you go on vacation this year. And so, uh, with that being said, I wanna present you with this certificate, but we also want to make sure that we recognize that today is also her birthday. And so if you guys would just help me and recognize Betsy on her birthday, Commissioner Campbell, I'll let you lead the way.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, U. R. C. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you so much. It, this has been my dream career. I think it's what I was born to do. Um, I have, it's been so exciting and so fulfilling and so, uh, great, working with all of these public servants that I've worked with over the years. Don Hershey's in the audience, and the first night that I was the city clerk was election night, and I was in his office. And I, you know, there are so many people in this room that, that I have had encounters with, or Coleman Commissioner Kitchens in the back. Thank you so much for allowing me to be the city clerk for the City of Palaca. It's, it's so rewarding and, and wonderful for me. Thank you.
I'd be remiss also, if we, Mr. Hershey, if you could stand up, along with Ms. Kitchens and any other elected officials, former elected officials, we want to make sure we recognize you. Now that you've gone through all the recognitions, time is up, and we'll cancel student of the month. And so, uh, we're gonna go ahead and move into, uh, really, what's one of our favorite things, and that's student of the month. And like always, beforehand, I wanna make sure that we, we thank our educators who are in the room and in the alleys, and one day we're gonna have you actually in the room, but our educators are all throughout the hallways, and, and they're representative of, of the people who sacrifice, such as Commissioner Campbell, on a daily basis, working with our young people. And all too many times, we never say thank you enough. We never say thank you for all the work that you do. So while our educators will stand up at this time, we want to make sure we recognize you. Thank you. As we move into our student of the month recognitions, we want all our students to come forward with just a representative from the school. Uh, we will line up across the front of the dais. Secondly, when your name is called, uh, after that, we will take a brief intermission. We'll take a picture for the newspaper with just the students, uh, and the commission. And then we'll have single file lines over on the side, and we will, during that recess, parents, you can come up, take pictures with your kids. If you want it, you want any of us to do your pictures as well, you can have that. We do, we do everything from, we do, we do, we do it all, we do selfies, we do whatever. Make sure we memorialize this moment because it's great. And, um, parents, at this time, if you guys could, anyone, parents, family's friend, can you all stand at this time for me? All our, yes, ma'am. This is the time that we say thank you to you for the work that you've done. Because this would not be possible if it was not for the support and the love and the preparation that comes from home. And all too many times, we don't have enough parents who let their children know that education is a, is a very important thing to them, and that their behavior is gonna be recognized. And there are people watching every move that they make. And so again, we want to thank you, because it takes a village to raise a child. You guys are doing a great job. Moving on, our first, our first person, Commissioner Born, you're with me this time. He's not getting student of the month.
I'm gonna ask for whoever was called to shake the mayor's hand, and then I'll, I'll present the, uh, certificate. So that's how we'll do that. You shake the mayor's hand, I present the, uh, certificate as well, I'm for all of them.
He's a computer guy, he's a computer programmer. He only believes in process. Everything has to be in order. And so first up is Caleb Stalling from Bradley Chris Elementary. From CLO, we're turf sixth grade center Ivy Kenya Sheffield. Congratulations. From Children's Reading Center Charter School, Kennedy Carlton. From H Miller School, Rashawn Perrin. From Tangle Lane Elementary School, Alexa Pitko. Alexa Pitko. I put your one, and here comes the second one. From Jenkins Middle School, Josh A. McDonald, did I get it close? Yeah, smile. Dr. Chapman. I was a load as patient. From Kelly, from Kelly Smith Elementary School, Cynthia O'Daker. From Miller Elementary, Leslie Al Qusiris. Was that close? Al Qusiris? Okay, I'll give him better. I'm just gonna start calling the last names. From Oden Elementary School, Dejana Adlin. Jared Gibbons is from Palaca High School. He will come, he will be with us next month. And so, we have, we got Ms. Reese Buckingham Spinn. Will Williams here, I'm sorry. I gave you a new last name. He's a captain with the police department. Next up, from Pennile Baptist Academy, Turner Hershey. From Button Academy of Arts and Sciences, Mackenzie Kelly. Congratulations. Last but not least, from Putnamant High School, Chitwan Brown. And so to our young people, um, I've been saying this since we started student of the month, um, with, with our group about three years or so ago. Something I learned as, as an eight-year-old, now forty-five, and it was taught in Ms. Green's class, and we said it every morning, and it simply says, I am somebody. My mind can't conceive it, and my heart can't believe it, I know I can achieve it because I am somebody. And we said that every day because it, it left in us the mindset that we can do anything but fail. And so for you young people, uh, we want to tell you that we're proud of you, that we love you, and that education is the key, and just continue to do great things in school, and you guys will be the leaders of this community, and that's what we want. So again, thank you guys for all your hard work, and we're gonna stand in recess at this time. Let's give them a round of applause. It's always great to have our student of the month, and, uh, activities in place. It's great to see a lot of people in here. Uh, we just wish that we would have more people in once the event is over. And so, uh, we're gonna move into, like, number two on our agenda, which is public comment. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. You know, actually, we'll be taking on topics of discussion. During our public comment session, we're gonna go ahead and have Coach Willie Fells come up from Palaca High School. He's the new head coach at Palaca High School, and we want to introduce him to the community. So Coach Fells, would you come up, give your name and address for the record, so that we can introduce you as the new Panther head football coach?
Awesome. Thank you, thank you for having me, Coach Willie Fells, head coach of Palaca High School, towards year one, East Cal Mouton, Palac Four. So first of all, just grateful to have you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for having me here, and you guys for having me here. Uh, I wanted to take this opportunity just to, uh, talk about Panther football for a little bit, and the history of Panther football, and really bring awareness to what we're trying to do in this community, with Panther football and the Booster Club. And we all can remember the times, uh, some would say the glory years of Panther football, uh, seventy-nine, uh, the mayor might say eighty-nine, but some say seventy-nine, eighty-five. Uh, the glory years of Panther football, we can all remember, I was only five years old, five years old at the time, but I hear the stories of businesses putting up the signs we're going to the football game. And after the football game, businesses opening back up, and therefore, for my community, you have an increase of, you know, uh, wealth, you had an increase of spending because people wanted to stay out a little bit longer. The impact that that community had on the young men that was in there, looking forward to being a part of a program that was winning, that was succeeding. They looked at that as a, man, I want to be that one day. I, I can remember that because I did the same thing, although I was an at-risk, uh, kid in middle school, elementary school, at middle school. I knew, when I got to a point though, that I wanted to be a part of Panther football. And a part of that was, was because I seen there's so many that came before me. And I think everyone in this room, in some form or another, they say six degrees of separation, but I believe that it's two degrees in Palaca, because everyone in this community, everyone in this room has been affected in some way by Pa, 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 by Panther football and the history of Panther football. Whether you have an uncle, sister, brother, cousin, whoever played football, husband, wife, no, no, you probably didn't have a wife to play football with. But you are, you somehow were affected by, you know, Panther football. And so, my call to action today, and what I wanna, uh, preach about, is the understanding that we have to come together as a community again to rebuild what we have in our Palaca Panther football. And number one, it starts with the, with the Booster Program. Uh, we're looking to build that Booster Program, we're looking for more members in our Booster Program to really get out there and get things done that needs to be done. And I think that you don't have to have a dog in the fight to be a part of our Booster Program. You don't have to have a, a child playing football to be a part of our Booster Pr, Booster Program, and we want to involve as many as we possible candidates in our Booster Program to help out in our Booster Program. And you could be a part of our Booster Pr, Booster Program by simply emailing PantherFootballBoosters@gmail.com uh and say simply, I want to be a Booster, and we'll contact you and get back with you in regards to what you, what levels you can get engaged at. And so with that being said, I'm excited about what we're doing right now, there's a lot of great things going on. Uh, we're building, uh, uh, new, new bridges to, right now with Panther football. We just, uh, am I, was my timing, I forgot. We just, um, built a, we're, we're working on building a leadership team right now, and we just reached out, we were reached out to by Purdue University School of Management and building a bridge and creating a leadership retreat this summer, uh, and, uh, with our leadership team, because we're looking to build men, not just about excellent or over, build men that may could be the next commissioners, the next mayors, the next chief of police in our communities. Because like I said, all of us have been affected in some form or another in regards to Panther football. These is our next generation of our city.
To other people though, just given a little, given your background, leaving Palaca, Palaca High School, and just where you've gone, career-wise.
Yes, and so, like I said, grew up right here in Palaca, obviously, but, um, had the blessed opportunity to attend Purdue University, uh, and, and, you know, really, really showcased what Palaca was about for me at Purdue University, because when you, when you go on that level and you're from the state of Florida, most people in that time, you say you were from Palaca, people knew who you were as athlete. People knew, oh, man, I know where Palaca's at. And it was such an honor to be able to be on, you know, ABC or CBS every week. Now, they may say Purdue on my back, but Palaca was in the front, because people knew who that was. And people turning on their channels, whether they knew me indirectly, and you get calls or you get members saying, hey, that's guy, that guy's from Palaca. And I wasn't the only one, there was three or two other guys right from Palaca that had that honor. And from there, I had the blessed opportunity to play six, seven years in the, mostly mainly in the CFL for the Catholic Stanford Peters. And again, when you still on that stage, and you able to talk to other pro athletes, and you say Palaca, they know exactly what you're talking about. And that's just not from me myself, but other people from, going from, you know, Clinton, I mean, Clayton Buford on up to, uh, whoever you want to name. And these people know who these people are, and they know what this town is. As town as smallest we are, have been impacted profoundly by Palaca High School football. And so now, you know, coming from that little guy running up and down, uh, Ninth Street, uh, jumping across the ditches in East Palaca, and to sit in here and be the head coach at Palaca High School, I'm not only grounded, but I understand that I have a mission, and, and I've been awarded something that I have to take as, uh, serious as Coach Jim McCool that affected my life and so many others.
Coach, again, we want to just welcome you to the City of Palaca, uh, welcome you back. And, uh, it's, it's exciting to hear something different from Panther football, uh, to hear us talk about the educational aspects of football, as well as connecting kids to universities to programs, uh, not just what's done with the ball, but what's done with the book. And so, uh, we appreciate you, and we would definitely support you and your endeavors. And this is what we've been preaching, which is young people coming back to Palaca to raise their families and to build their careers. And so Coach Fells gave up a college coach, college football coaching job to come back to this community, from Bethel College in Tennessee, to come back to, come back to the Palaca community just to work, and that's what this is all about. And so, we thank you for being here, and we thank you for, for working with our young people.
Yeah, I certainly like the thinking for our dedication and passion for the game and the kids. I had the opportunity to assist them a little bit with some technology news at, uh, at Palaca High, and, uh, just walking into the gym, I mean, uh, the locker room there, uh, it was certainly, uh, like, uh, the culture that you're putting into the kids, I could see it, uh, I guess the benefits of it, with your young man, um, Tavell Williams, who's, uh, you know, Tavell Adams, who has, uh, increased his strength, and, but how much, how much was it?
Well, when we, when I first got in January, one of the first things we did was test every athlete. Tavell Adams specifically was squatting three hundred and thirty pounds. Uh, last week, he squatted five hundred pounds. In three months.
He's, he's really, um, he's built a culture of, uh, winning, uh, and determination of these guys, and you can go forward in locker room and you'll feel the same thing. Everybody's, uh, either be, go big or go home.
Go big, go home.
Um, I'm super excited about this return home, as everyone-
As everyone can know, like the mayor said, we, I'm one of those ones that is a big component of go get all the information of the, everything you need and bring it back home and create individuals that can go out and go even further than what you've done. Your testament, I follow you on Facebook, I see all the workouts, I see everything that you're doing. I need to come out there and join you all. But I'm super excited about the culture that going to be Friday nights, it used to be a time where everybody was at the game. And I think that is going to come back under your great leadership and I know the football team is going to do a great thing. Thank you so much. If there's anything that I can do, I'll commit to being the booster in any way that I can because Palaca High School gave a lot to me and now it's time for me to get back to my school.
I'm super excited because I've been talking to Coach Fells, Coach Fells, he told me that his favorite Florida school was Florida State. So Coach, some meetings getting out of hand. I will inform you that the glory years did end in eighty-nine. Ten and O number two in the state, just for the reference. Now I'm going to move our agenda. There's no one else here for public comment. There's no one else here for public comment and it's time to move on to item three, which is our consent agenda. In our consent agenda, we have items A through L. Are there any items that need to be removed in the consent agenda?
I'd like a motion to approve items A through L as stated.
This is a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any further discussion?
On this, on the project that like, there's this ongoing example where like, A, going for continued work and you can see some of those status as the, the percentage of patients on there that have been helped along the way.
You want some additional data?
That's pretty much it.
We've got a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any further unreadyness? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Coach Fells, that took you out of order, that was item four of the agenda. We will now move on to our discussion of the municipal golf course advisory board. The recommendation is to appoint me as the liaison for the, of the commission to the advisory board. And there was, and so that you know, the, the board, the golf association agreed to continue on with the advisory board in its capacity as long as there were representatives from the commission. That information was related to Mr. Triggers. And I volunteered to be that member. And so unless there is any unrest with that recommendation, I will entertain a motion. Motion on the floor, second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item six, city manager and administrator report. Chief Shaw.
I have nothing to say, sir.
Thank you so much, Chief Shaw, for the great work that you've been doing in the city and the reduction in UCR. Mr., I'm sorry, Ms. Robinson. Mr. Griffin. Sorry, do we have anything over here?
Yes, actually I have something. I just wanted to let you know that.
Give me your, give me your name for the record and your department.
Logan Becker, Finance Department. I just wanted to let you know that I spoke with the city manager and we both agree that in order to give you a comprehensive overview of our financials, where we stand, we would like to wait until we get the revenues for March thirty-first. That'll give a good clean six-month view. That way you have, we can have a better understanding and we'll be able to present you some clean numbers.
Ms. Becker's first report in her official capacity. Again, Palaca born and bred, coming back home to work with, to work with the city to further career raise your family. Just what we've been talking about. And to the birthday lady, Ms. Triggers.
March of Dimes is one month away.
March of Dimes is one month away, April twenty-first. We look for everyone to help us out with the March for Babies. Mr. Holmes. Mr. Holmes has nothing. Mr. Folsman.
I just want to say thank to all the employees who got recognized tonight. All of them have contributed fully to this organization, from Sophia to all of them. Very appreciative that we recognize our employees to really showcase their commitment to us and to the organization and really show our appreciation. Definitely want to thank Ms. Triggers, our city clerk, who has done phenomenal job over the years, her dedication and commitment to this organization is unparalleled and is, it is sometimes is not truly as appreciated as it should be, but we want to know we care about you, we appreciate the work you've done over the years, we know that. We really appreciate you. So thank you so much. Happy birthday. So that's a big honor to have a birthday.
I told Logan that she will experience many birthdays in this chamber if she faces her, if she wants to come.
So we appreciate that as well. Also, as the finance director stated, Commissioner Borum had spoken last time about us bringing back some year-to-date actuals. And so once you know that six months come in, we're going to bring them back to a presentation to the board. The board knows exactly where we're at going forward for the rest of the year. So we do want to do that. And tomorrow we'll provide more information to you in our meeting. So thank you guys so much. Other than that, that's all I have for tonight.
Commissioner Campbell. Yes, I just want to say again, happy birthday to Bessie. I'm thanking you for everything that you have done and been instrumental in my run as commissioner and I greatly appreciate you making yourself available anytime that I call because I know you're probably working regardless, so I call. But thank you so much. Also, I want to share that we had the opportunity last week to travel down to Miami for the FPL Leo conference. Mayor Hill and Commissioner Borum were able to get with other black elected officials from around the state of Florida. It was a dynamic, dynamic meeting. We had several speakers to come in from the board of the city to talk about, to talk about a variety of things. So I definitely thank you, thank you for everything, just everything we got out of that, just letting citizens know that. We may not be here all the time, but we're definitely working in our absence.
Let's hear it, Commissioner Borum.
Again, I'd like to thank Bessie for her 20 years dedication and commitment to our city many times. People don't understand the whole, her job or the role, whatever, but she is the one that keeps everything ticking, keeping us sprayed, abiding by the, what do you call protocols, the whole man, keeping us out of the front of the, on the front page of the government. Bessie's here, you can ride by anytime, she's here all times of morning and night. So we want to look and make sure that we take care of Bessie. We go, if she goes down, we be the backup. So we just, again, like to thank Bessie and we look forward to her continued support for the city.
Sorry, Bessie, right?
Again, I feel like I went on a tour from last Wednesday. We took out and we went down, we took the charter bus, it was zero, set up by the mayor and we took a number of people down. We actually talked to the kids, every person who was in a profession had a chance to share with the kids how they got into their profession and allowed the students to kind of know, hey, you do have a person that you could reach out to if you were interested in that. And we had everybody from nurses to leash chiefs, mayors, IT, FBI agents and the like, someone back into these kids' lives, telling them. And we also got information back from those students and understanding what their interest and desire was. So we got, we had a chance to dialogue with the kids. But left out Wednesday, we got back late Wednesday night, took out to go to Miami, down to the FPL, and that went very well. I mean, we also participated in the mayor's, the mayor's three K walk down there myself and Mayor Hill.
Mayor Wayne Massum of Miramar.
Right, Miramar. So I let him expand on that and also we had a chance to meet the Kingston Jamaica mayor as well with their delegation. And last but not least, we also met with Ms. Mayor Sherwood Holland. We had to do, came, went out and we celebrated with some kids. They had many activities from, you know, racing with jumping lags, hot eggs, hot egg and egg hunting, the whole nine. But long story short, we participated in all those events while we were out. So our work is never done, continuous work for our citizens and our staff.
So just to piggyback off of what the board talked about, you know, the Florida Blackhawks are locally elected officials is the oldest organization, minority elected officials in the state of Florida. Mr. Campbell's the secretary and I'm the northern membership chair and Vice Mayor Brown is the historian for the organization. And she is the oldest member in office, the longest-serving member in office at this time. And she also serves in Board of Trustees for Florida City. The beautiful part about the organization as a whole, but there was an opportunity to get ethics credits, there was an opportunity to sit through a number of sessions. Wing Graham, gubernatorial candidate, and there were two gubernatorial candidates that were in there for, during the course of our meetings. But additionally, we got a chance to tour other cities, Miami Gardens, Miramar, Pembroke Park. And we were able to sit down and take tours with the mayors and talk to them about some of the challenges that they face, some of the things that they're going from a technology standpoint. I think the city of Miramar, Twins, we sat in on a Twins city meeting where we were there with the mayor of Kingston Jamaica, the deputy mayor and another commissioner, as well as their city, their town clerk is actually their, their city manager per se. And they talked about wanting to build economic relationships with other communities inside of Florida from concert series in large cities like Miami to being able to do international trade in smaller communities with history such as Palaca. And there's an opportunity for us to further that relationship with them. We already spent three days with that, with that particular city in Kingston Jamaica. They've invited us over to view some of the things that they do to see if there's a way for us to create a sister-city relationship with them as well. Outside of that, I think the other thing that we were able to do was really to look at the financial situations and what people are spending in other communities and realize that we don't really have it as bad as we think we do when we look at, when we, when we look at the big picture. There are other communities out there that we think are extremely progressive and some of the things that they're doing are not what we do in Palaca. And so that's been where we are. And so we constantly work to try to bring back new ideas. We've got some great perspectives as it relates to reuse projects from Miramar. We got a chance to look at some health fair initiatives that were created by Mayor Massum as well as some twenty projects and commissions and committees that can be put together to make some things better. But it was money well spent to sit down and look at the city of Miami Gardens festival that they put in place and how they turned a small festival that was dedicated to one hundred thousand dollars a year into a multi-billion dollar event with national sponsors. It's just incredible. And they talked about the first five years of struggle before. It just took off and it's now bringing sixty thousand people in two nights with major sponsors and just great recall. And Miami Gardens at that time was a very new city with a population very similar to what we have and they've now grown by leaps and bounds. So there are opportunities out there. I think with what we're looking at with some of the festivals here, it gives the city some insight as to how we may be able to push this community forward into market, some of the things that we have and that we're once here and really great. Aside from that, I also have an opportunity to go to Senegal. Invited to go to Senegal with Boone Cookman University on an economic development trip. The government leaders in Senegal actually are very interested in looking at water projects and looking at rural development as well as in an effort to try to create some different industries within their own community and advance some of the things that they have in place. And so that invites in place, I'll come to the commission for approval of that, of that opportunity that stands before, that trip will be on April twenty-first, twenty through twenty-seventh this year. And there's just an opportunity for us to actually have Palaca be recognized internationally as well and to complement the vision relationship. And so with that, I'm excited about what's going on in Palaca. There's movement, there's growth, there's energy. And there's no more energy than what came from Coach Willie Fells. If I was, if I was thirty years younger, I would be in the band.